Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, May 22, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome again. Dawn, if you would, please do the roll call.
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
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 Thank you, Dawn.
Our mission statement: Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. First up tonight, we have our Highlander highlights, and we're going to take a moment to honor our Athena Award and the Oscar Ing Award. Just want to read about each of them just briefly, if I could. The Athena Award: Columbia Heights High School senior Kira Greenfield is the 2018 recipient of the Athena Award. The Athena Award is given to the best all-around female athlete at Columbia Heights High School each year. Nominations are solicited from head coaches and administration. Athletes usually compete in more than one sport, have made significant contributions both on and off the field. Winners display athleticism, competitive edge, academic focus, and community involvement. Kira accepted her award at the 46th Annual Minneapolis Athena Award Luncheon on Friday, May 4. Apparently, she's pitching tonight for softball, is that what I heard? So she's not able to be here. Antoine, if you want, maybe talk a little bit about what she did, the activities she was involved with.
Of course. Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Ms. Greenfield was a very unique and is a very unique student. She was a varsity swimmer, honorable mention in basketball multiple times, all-conference in softball, and she won countless spotlight academic awards. The Athena Award Luncheon was something of a sight to see. We had a great time there, myself and her mom, and some of our selected staff members were there to see all the award winners. It was a wonderful opportunity to take part of.
Thank you. Again, she's not here tonight, but either way, I think, if you guys don't mind, we'll give her a round of applause for her award.
Next up would be the Oscar Ing Award. It's a longtime educator and administrator for Columbia Heights, the Columbia Heights School District for three decades. He served as an assistant principal for years and was the first athletic director at Columbia Heights High School. In his honor, the 2018 Oscar Ing Award presented to Dylan Lentz is given to a student athlete who has exemplified hard work and effort, not only on the athletic court mat or pool, but also in the classroom. The recipient is a senior male athlete who has excelled in effort and attitude in working toward achieving the best that he can.
Dylan Lentz here has been named All-District in Football multiple times, All-Conference in Wrestling multiple times, fifth in state this past year, and outstanding senior wrestler from the Tri-Metro Conference. He's a varsity baseball player and also has received countless spotlight on academic awards. In addition to that, during his free hour during the day, he comes down and helps myself and Jake out in the Athletic Department. So he does a lot of heavy lifting for us, so he helps us out very much. So thank you very much, Dylan.
Okay, and Dylan, we're going to have you come up. He's going to be receiving his certificate. Dylan Lentz is recognized for receiving the 2018 Oscar Ing Award. Thank you for representing the Columbia Heights School District. we were done, if it would be, if he would be able to leave early. And this is, you haven't been to one of these before. Normally, I say now's the time to run, but he actually requested to be able to leave early, so I assume you have lots of homework you want to go get home to, right? Is that exactly what it is?
You're practicing for Thursday's game? Yeah, yeah, all right.
All right. So either way, you're welcome to stay, but absolutely, this would be a good opportunity to run, so. Okay. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Next up would be the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. First up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
移到
Second.
Lorian and Natty?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Announcements: May 28, no school Memorial Day. June 5, Tuesday, is the filing for the school board seats closes. June 7, Thursday, the last day for students, June 7 at 7:00 p.m., commencement here at the high school. June 12 at 5:00 p.m., there'll be a subcommittee on policy. Also on June 12, there will be a 7:00 p.m. regular school board meeting. June 19 at 5:00 p.m., school board listening session. 19th as well, 5:30 school board work session. And June 26, 7:00 p.m., a school board meeting, scheduled meeting, so. Next would be correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, is any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Next up would be communications to the board. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I don't see any blue sheets, Dawn. Nothing? Okay, we'll keep moving. Kristy Lynn Moyer, $120. Susan and Joseph Legu, $100. Zachary and Molly Newman, $35. Sheila Gales-Birnet, $120. Thomas and Margaret Beck, $120. Sarah Shurek, $15. Lisa Apostolou, $40. Janet Johnson, $86. Northeast Bank Employees, $4. Mirage Khan, $350. Centennial Church, $240. Fustina and Christopher Allen, $10. Columbia Heights Police Association, $150. Nicholas and Brenna Ziemut, $500. Mary Kunisch-Podingen and Tim Podingen, $100. Arian Kokas, $120. Connie Biscans and Keith Olsen, $120. Roger and Teresa Howard, $10. Valley View PTO, $600. Kristen Stunkel and Kent Honle, $50. Community Grounds LLC, $161.50. Heights Church, $500. Columbia Heights Lions Club, $100. Anonymous, $10. Anonymous, $100. Nicholas Ziemut, $50. Anonymous, $25. Michael Russer, $25. Aaron Jardal Redlin, $25. Stacy Nakora, $50. Anonymous, $25. Lorian Mueller, $600. Anonymous, $120. Jeannie Cox, $25. Jonathan Relander, $25. Deb Allen, $50. Community Grounds, $60. And then the following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. Joseph Hervela, $250. Thomas Mulligan, $500. Muskie Company Foundation, $500. Karen Hammerston, $100. Michael Magnuson, $100. Pamela Zimba, $100. Jane Hallock and Elaine Yost, $100. William Yost, $700. Jane Leopold, $100. Albert Ogde, $50. Paula and Stephen Hall, $50. William and Donna Calvary, $100. Dorothy Olsen and Lori Rasmussen, $1,000. And the Columbia Heights High School Class of 1976, $750. Total fiscal year 2017-2018 monetary contributions to date are $64,274.21. Discussion or comments or conversation regarding that?
It's a fun list. It's fun to see all the ways that people are giving to the students directly, and it's pretty great. Thank you.
Good. Yeah, that's a lot of reading, sorry. That's good, a lot of reading, but still a lot of reading, so. Next up will be our discussion reports and information items. Oh, yes. I should probably do that. Thank you. Good catch. Yeah, we got to vote on that one, so roll call for the resolution for the acknowledgement of contributions.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. Now, discussion reports and information items would be reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activity since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Lord, am I going first?
Oh, sure. Well, let me see. I attended the listening session last week, and I believe that will be a board topic. We'll have a brief discussion, I imagine. I also attended the work-study session. I had several conversations with constituents, attended the band concert over at the high school last night, and the students did a fabulous job, as always. Very impressed from the beginning of the year to the end of year, just how much they've grown, so it was a really fun evening. And I thank the school so much for, you know, being able to provide that, so it was a great experience. And then, that's it for me.
Okay.
I think.
Lorian?
Sure. I had the opportunity to go to the Valley View PTO meeting. I also attended the Valley View Carnival. That was really a great fundraiser experience that they had over there. I attended the grand march for the prom. That was my first experience doing that. That was very fun to see all the kids all dressed up. Also attended the Columbia Academy Choir Concert, the listening session, our work session, the Silverwood Expressions Art Opening for the secondary schools. I attended that as well. The Silver Lake Symphonic Wind Ensemble Concert at Como Park, the high school band concert, and had several conversations with community members. It was a busy couple of weeks.
No kidding. Okay, thank you. Natty?
Yeah, I have a little longer list. I'm sorry I wasn't able to join you guys' last meeting. I wasn't feeling very well, so. So I'm going back a little bit further, probably things you all mentioned in your last reports, but I was able to attend the teacher career celebration, and that's always fun. I love seeing that. I love celebrating those who are retiring and listening to them ring those bells. That was pretty fun. Been to a lot of baseball and softball games between the middle school and the high school. Was able to have the high school music a little in there. The Mayor's Community Breakfast, Citizens for Safer Streets, and then the work session. Couple of chair meetings. Had different conversations with the superintendent and various board members on various topics. Was able to go to the Expressions, the secondary, is that what we're calling it, exhibit, and see their music, which was really fun. They're really impressive. They've done a lot of cool things. I was able to have conversations with many, many community members on a lot of topics, so that's good. Was able to meet some parents down at the Capitol to ask Governor Dayton to release some funds. Is that something we report here? Yep, all right. And was able to talk to a lot of different parents and actually board members from other schools there, so it was interesting conversations to be had.
Okay, thank you. Lorian?
Yeah, I attended the work session last week and then also observed the mock car crash that we did, that the district held the weekend or the Friday before prom, and that was pretty powerful. It was pretty incredible, all the different partnerships that come together to really present a pretty impactful statement to the kids. That was really well done. Also, I attended the Wax Museum over at Highland, a lot of fun energy there. They're doing a great job of keeping the kiddos in the classrooms and still engaged in a lot of learning, so that was really fun to see. Lots of conversations with community members, again, about a lot of topics, lots of conversations going on all around, and also attended many middle school and varsity track meets. That's it.
Thank you. I attended the work session, baseball game, caught the one and only one that they've had rain at, but it was still a good game. Silverwood Secondary, I went to, I was at the band concert last night for the high school. It amazes me how well the kids continued, doesn't it? It's just amazing to listen to them. Music, trust me, is alive and well in the district. And then I had the chair meeting tonight, prior to this meeting, and I also have had multiple conversations with constituents and parents throughout the community, so. And that concludes my report. Superintendent's report. Have you got one tonight?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, I do. The Director of Teaching and Learning, and I attended Valley View and North Park PTO/PTA meetings. Highland was canceled, so we didn't get a chance to stop in that night. I attended the pow-wow on Saturday, and it was another great event. We've done it for a number of years now. It was at the Highlander Center. We had many, many people here. It's a free event, and it included drumming and singing and dancing and drawing and games. And one of the highlights, beyond the dancers that were dancing, was that one of our graduates received the eagle feather for graduation, which was always special, and I just want to say thanks to Valerie Larson and to Xena Stenvig and to the whole American Indian Education Committee. The event goes, it gets bigger each year. The food was fabulous, and that's really the same gentleman who did our prom food. Justin Schreier did that along with Deb Vera, so thank them as well. I had the opportunity to attend both evenings of the Expressions Art Show, and I want to agree with what everybody said, the visual and performing arts were out in force. It was beautiful weather and such a nice gathering of everything, and hats off to our students who did such a great job and to our teachers as well. We have a big thank you to the city of Columbia Heights and the Columbia Heights Police Department and the friendly Columbia Heights Rotary Club. They collaborated and they donated seven bikes, helmets, and locks on May 18 to the students at Valley View Elementary and at Columbia Academy. We'd like to thank everybody who's contributing to the Eat Up the Debt matching campaign, and we have a matching challenge that started yesterday and goes through May 31, and we have an anonymous donor who has, will donate up to $6,000 if, and if we can match that. And so, we're encouraging anybody that hasn't donated or would like to donate more to visit our website to make that, to make that contribution. The Director of Teaching and Learning and the Director of Technology and Safety and Security, Xena and Brian and I went out to a 916 seminar on school safety, and it was put on by a resident expert in the field, Rick Kaufman, who actually was a Communications Director for Columbine and now consults across the United States. He happens to work in the Bloomington School District, and so he spent about an hour and a half really talking to us about some things to consider. And in addition to that, we're forming a collaborative so we can share resources and ideas on how to make our schools with the resources we have more safe and secure. And so that was, that was a really good afternoon spent. I want to congratulate the high school on a very successful prom. It's always nice to see them at the grand march, and I think the students that attended really enjoyed the bank stadium, which was a new venue for us, something about looking out at the stadium and seeing the color purple too, all at the same time, so it was a little bit of heights pride and Viking purple. The district management team enjoyed serving the prom dinner to students, and it was served in this room, who wanted to attend, and Justin Schreier did that, and it was, he prepared all the food, and I swear that Xena Stenvig could run her own restaurant because she kept us all hopping. I did attend all the school board work-study and had contact with multiple members of the board, was at the chair meeting, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, the board will be presented with information on the ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, received by our finance department. The ASBO is the Association of School Business Officials International. I'd like to read a press release that was put out. The Association of School Business Officials International is pleased to award Columbia Heights Public Schools with a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. ASBO International COE recognizes districts that have met the program's high standards for financial reporting and accountability. The school district earned the Certificate of Excellence for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended 2017. The COE's mission is to promote and recognize excellent in financial reporting, specifically through a district's CAFER. ASBO International Executive Director John Musso says, "The CAFER informs parents and other stakeholders about the financial and economic state of the district, making it an important communications tool for building trust and engaging the school community." By participating in the COE program, school districts demonstrate their commitment to financial transparency. Applicants submit their CAFER for review by a team of professional auditors who provide feedback to improve future documents. If the CAFER meets the requirements of the program, the document may receive the Certificate of Excellence. A district's participation in the COE program can facilitate bond rating and continuing bond disclosure processes. The COE is proudly sponsored by the ASBO International Strategic Partner Valek, a division of the American International Group, Inc., AIG. And if I remember correctly, this is not the first time this has happened.
Eleven, so 11th straight year.
It's the 11th consecutive year that we've received this award. That's pretty amazing, so would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, you summarized it very well. But basically, it's a comprehensive review by professional auditors, and you send all of your information in, and they look at it with a fine-tooth comb and send back recommendations for you to implement in the following years. And if you meet the criteria, they give you the Certificate of Excellence Award. And it's really a testament, this is the 11th year that the district has received it, and it's a testament to the hard work of the people up in the business office, and really, it can't be done unless everyone in the district participates, you know, from the management team to everyone who's coding expenditures and that type of thing. It's really a group effort, and so I'd just like to thank the staff upstairs that do really all the hard lifting all year long. They do a really great job.
Okay. You got a certificate, now would be good, huh?
Sure. Oh, okay.
The board will be presented with information on Strategic Direction E: Tell Our Story, and our presenter will be Director Hannikens.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, usually it's Director Mahan and myself doing this presentation each year. He's out this evening, so I will run solo on it and review Strategic Direction E: Telling Our Story. As we usually start, reviewing our core values and our mission statement: community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Strategic Directions, you can see our strategic roadmap. We have our mission, our core values, vision, and then the strategic directions. And again, we're talking about telling our story this evening, brand development, reputation management, and increasing partnerships and enrollment. So the first measurement is E1, market share of school-aged children in the district schools. That has not changed over the past many years. We've been just under 60% for, I think, the past four years that I recollect, so we've been in this position, and it's something that we continue to work on and talk about and as far as our enrollment and where our students are enrolling. So it's not, it's not a decrease from years past, it's just a level plane. We're basically exactly where we were the last three to four years. E2, Columbia Heights Public Schools students and families connecting using digital media. In order to measure this, we had to have something to pinpoint, so in this case, we're talking about our parent and student portal. And one of the changes, we continue to increase on the parent side, so on the far-right, Level One, or far-left, Level One, the red is where we're at for our parent engagement in the parent portal. We do continue to increase every year. We started this measure, our participation was under 10%, so it was incredibly low. Now we're pushing 30%. So we continue to grow in this area, we just haven't hit that mark yet in getting above that 35%. As far as students, we did increase this year, so students, we increased by, I think, 13% this year, students, and moved into 11.5, so now 6.12, as far as our students is what we're looking at in parents. We're engaging, I think it was pushing 90% of our students, so I'm very happy about that, and I think that it was one of our focuses in the Personalized Learning Initiative as we rolled out one-to-one, getting our students engaged in the student portal, so I definitely feel success in that area as that has grown over the years. E3, Columbia Heights Public Schools staff demonstrating the district's core values in their everyday work. This one's incredibly hard to measure, so every year, what we talk about are the things that we're doing. Director Mahan is much more involved in this area, but again, as you can see by our core value signs, mission statements, the banners that we have in the schools, putting our core values in the schools, we have the core values on the back of our badges, so we've made a very, very large effort in this area, is making sure that we have our brand and people know what our core values are and what our mission is. And you can see in the other measurements as we go on, talking about the mission and logo on marketing materials, and that we're at a Level Five in those areas, and that's because of the work in this area. So E4, Percentage of Performing Arts and Activities Communications, which include the mission of Columbia Heights Public Schools. Again, when we started this, we were very low in this area. Most of the marketing materials was put out by the buildings or by the program, and we weren't really branding that information, and you can see that we're, 95% plus to get to a Level Five, so we're getting there. But again, this is an area we continue to see increase in. We didn't quite get to that 95% this year, though. E5, District Published Materials, we're well over 95%. I would say that there may be one that got missed, but the Communications Department has done an outstanding job of making, again, making sure that that information is there and people really know who we are, and this is our information. And then the last one, favorable responses to three universal climate questions. We're at a Level Five, and we have been for quite some time, but we have a climate survey that's done every year, and so are the students reporting that they feel safe in school, that they have pride in their school, that adults care about them? So 75% or higher of students do indicate that they feel safe in school, that they feel pride in their school, and that they feel that adults care about them, and I think those are important measures. There's always, you know, 75% or higher, that's a large gap between 75 and 100%, but I think that that's a sense of pride in what we're doing to try to improve over the years the climate of the buildings, ensuring the schools are safe and that the kids feel that they're safe. So those are all the measures of Strategic Direction E. So as I went through everything, there really wasn't a lot of change. There was just that one change in their measure for students connecting into student view. So the level change was just slightly, just because of that, so we moved from a 3.3 to 3.4, so we're still in that Level Four in this area. Questions about Strategic Direction E?
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. On, there's two areas that we're obviously needing to continue to focus on. I mean, we're going to continue to focus on all of these areas. We don't want them to go backwards. But we have the area of our families connecting through electronically, and so we're measuring that just based solely on the use of the, like, the parent view. Is that, I don't know what that is. Is that, I don't know what that is. So it's 6 through 12?
Yeah, we're measuring that 612 just because we haven't had a concerted effort in connecting our elementary families yet because of the historical focus of gradebook and that type of information is in there. I think we have more and more elementary families, but we just haven't included that in the measure as yet.
Is that something that we're continuing to explore as to the student view, parent view, if that's the right tool for us and kind of what that looks like moving forward?
Yeah, the goal, and it's part of the technology plan as well, is making sure that there's the best that we can create, a one-stop shop for parents to get information. And our student information system has the most information across the board. So the pieces that it's missing, it's finding a way to get those pieces in. So like Schoology would be a good example of that. It's a learning management system that the elementary or the middle school uses. We're working on ways for next school year to make it easier for teachers to get the information from Schoology into our student information system, which means that it would be directly accessible in parent view. So continuing to make those links is important and that will continue to make it more appealing for parents to engage in it.
I know this isn't engagement, when I think engagement, I think of two-way communication, right? So ways that we communicate out as well as receive information in. Maybe I'm not interpreting that the same way that you see engagement, but are we looking at all in terms of the number of parents, especially in our maybe K through 5, that are like receiving emails or, you know, getting kind of electronic updates from principals, building announcements, or that sort of thing via technology?
We do have a count by building, or we can provide or create an account by building of how many parents we have email addresses for. So, and we can say, okay, you know, this newsletter goes out to this many families or parents in this building. Every time the newsletter goes out, we have no idea of whether they read it or accessed it, but we can do that. And some buildings are much higher than others, but our percent of families that we have emails documented for is significantly higher in the last year or two. And if we, we're working on a change for next year as we get emergency card information to be able to get even more parent emails.
I still have more questions.
They're good questions.
For the second area of the resident students that live in Columbia Heights or Southern Fridley Hilltop that are attending, and we're still just really hovering just below or right at that 60%. I know that we did a survey, we talked about that earlier, I think sometime earlier in the year, maybe late last year, that we had done the survey for folks that weren't attending. Can, do you remember when we did that?
I don't.
Yeah, I don't know, it's off the top of my head. But is that, so that's an unfair question, I apologize. But is that something that we're looking at doing again as we continue to focus on our local student enrollment? Do you know?
Survey specifically, I couldn't say, but I know like it is one of our measures, it's one of our focus areas, so we're going to continue to try to improve that area. And if a survey is deemed necessary, then yes, I would assume that we would do something like that. But we've definitely surveyed over the years. I can't recall when the last one was specifically.
I remember, we talked about it, like I said, within the last seven or eight months, but I can't recall specifically. Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick question. Well, hopefully quick. In regards to the parent portal?
Yes.
How are we trying to connect our parents? Can you speak about that? And how can, if a parent is listening to this, how can they get connected?
So parents can get connected through the office of the building that their children are at. And we did have a couple of people from my staff attend open houses at the beginning of the year to try to get parents connected. And so some success there. The first year, we had a lot of success at the middle school. We were overwhelmed with parents connecting at the middle school and getting accounts and signing them up, to the point where we were even helping them, because they didn't have emails, we were helping them create an email account because they have to have an email account in order to sign up. So, and we had students as our interpreters for that, so we could handle the multi-language at the table. So that was very successful. We will likely continue to do that. It's been a conversation from my team, from the technology side, how can we help that? But it is something that the schools are, I think, taking a conservative effort at to try to help us with that, because we can't, obviously, the technology department can't do it alone. We are engaging in other tools as well. I mean, we mentioned parent view and student view, and that was one that we were using across the board. It was one that we can measure, we could, we have solid data on. Where, you know, emails, it was a little bit more. We are, all of our schools do have some kind of, at some level, app-based communication tools. From a district level, we're looking at trying to take that in and get it down to one for all levels, instead of, you know, one building using one app from their parents and another building using another app. Class Dojo is one, Seesaw is another, to ensure that, you know, it's easier for parents, because that's more of that two-way communication that can happen through a tool like that versus, you know, here's just everything that we test and assessment, transportation, and everything that we can put into the student information system and into the parent portal. Like a Seesaw is more of a two-way communication tool. So we are looking at that for next year as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Next up would be our climate survey. We've got Valley View and Highland tonight.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, this is round two of our climate survey presentation. You heard from the other schools at our previous school board meeting. And this evening, I'm here with Principal Michelle DeWitt and Principal Ed Fellows to present the climate survey results from Highland Elementary and Valley View Elementary. So of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and doing annual surveys like this help to provide that information for us to do just that. Our areas of focus on this presentation are community and excellence. So just a quick repeat or recap of what the comprehensive school climate inventory is and why we do it. We really understand that having a positive school climate impacts the indicators of success for our students. So it's not always about learning your ABCs and one-two theories, it's also about having that positive and safe climate as well. We had a variety of participation levels. I mentioned at our last meeting that there was challenges with the link and getting it to the parents, and so we've been able to resolve that for the upcoming school year. But here you can see both Valley View and Highland had really good responses. This is, just shows the variety of ways in which we did reach out to students, staff, and parents to collect the data. And then there are multiple categories for, that are covered in the survey. So here, different topics under safety, teaching and learning, interpersonal relationships, social media, and then there's two categories that staff only reported on, leadership and professional relationships. Just to reiterate that this is a national climate survey. So when, after we took this survey, I reached out to the consultant from the company that distributes this survey to get more information and to really understand the results. And one thing that I found interesting was that, and curious, was that across the nation, the trend is that the social media category, which was new in 2016, tends to be lower than other categories across the nation. The other one that tends to be lower is social emotional security. So you, we've seen some of that reflected in our schools, and again, that was a big question for me. So it is a national trend, unfortunately, but it also, I think, all of the results that we get are tangible things that we are able to, you know, take action on. So with that, we're going, I'm going to explain with to you the colors and the ranges that you'll see. The lightest blue colors that you see are the positive ranges. Then there's a middle, medium-colored blue, which is neutral. And then the darkest blue-black color is, it scores falling in that negative range. So we're going to begin with Principal DeWitt and Highland Elementary.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight. I think overall, we're very pleased that we were able to get as many results from the survey. As we did, we had a very high level of participation with both our staff and our students. We were, I believe, in the average range for parents, but we did receive a number of parent surveys back. So we feel like we did get some really representative results from our families and students.
So this is just a really interesting comparison for schools and district staff to take a peek at. What are the, what are the different groups of people saying and gleaning, why might students, for example, physical surroundings rate at the highest, whereas teachers and school personnel rating it in that middle range? So those are questions that we can bring back to the staff and have conversations around.
I think, again, we're, you know, pleased to stay really in that positive to neutral range for all of our areas at Highland. I think some of the differences that we've experienced in the last two years, we are a very full building, we're, you know, 600 students with our pre-K. We do have one federal setting special ed program that's occurring at Highland, which does add a little extra excitement most days to our building. We also really do our best to monitor on the playground, but we are at a shortage level, and I know that has caused quite a bit of strain for both administration, teachers, staff, and students as well, because we are actively looking to make sure that all areas of our building are adequately supervised at all times. But it is ideally, especially with a building that's as full as we are, we would like to be fully staffed at all times to provide that safe environment everywhere that children go. I do quite honestly feel like that is a reflection of some of our scores this year, was just our lack of ability to hire playground monitors. And I know that's consistent with our three elementary schools.
So this is similar information, just looking at it in a different way. You can see, again, all of the results being in that positive or neutral range with none of the results being in that negative range. Let's take a look at Valley View.
Thank you, Chairman Larkin, board members, and Superintendent Kelly. I do apologize for being absent on the last one and missing out on the fun, and so thank you for letting us be here this evening. One of the things that I, that was important to us is that we get a voice of our students, parents, and staff equally. And so we want to know where we're at and making sure that we hear it from everyone. One of the things that was interesting that poked its head is that teachers and students, they're both relational, and that's what they rated very high. And of course, the school personnel rated the teaching a little bit higher than the kids, but go figure that, right? But the relationships is really important, and of course, the perception of safety. School personnel are always looking for things that they can do better and things, and systems that we need to have in place for the safety. And so I believe that had some things to do with what was happening at Valley View during that snapshot. And then from 2016 to 2018, Valley View had increases in all areas except for social media and sense of social emotional security, which remained the same over the past two years. And so I was pleased that we got more student feedback and also we showed some increases in how they were feeling in those domains. And going from 2016 to 2018, we were positive and neutral in all areas. And during a transition of leadership as well as increase in enrollment in some grade levels, we were very, we thought that was a realistic representation of where we're at right now.
So what are the parents saying in general across the district? Categories for growth, again, nationwide, social media, and sense of social emotional security are things that schools across the United States are working toward. And then categories that are working well across the district, we're seeing respect for diversity, connectedness and engagement, support for learning, and that social support. So again, this is an informational update. I won't be back with an action, seeking action.
Questions or comments?
Just curious on how, if you do like activate, now you've got this information, so is there an activation component here now that we've gathered this information?
At the district level, this information is shared among all of the principals and some of the other administrators. And so we have conversations around that to start, and then it goes to the school level from there.
And one of the things that I was interested in looking at is during the parent forums and also when we did the student forums for feedback, what they want their every day to look like at school to see if the parallels of the January survey mirrored what we were having discussions about in April. And so we found some commonalities in that, and we're taking some action steps as far as making sure that we're addressing and making sure that parents and students know that their voices are being heard along with staff members.
Just have a comment and question. I think that, my assumption is looking at this and my preference, I'm assuming our goals are to be as light blue as possible across the board.
We're always looking to continually, continuously improve in all areas, so definitely.
So looking at as much of the positive and neutral either staying the same or turning light blue and staying away from the negative. So then you said that the school teams are now focused on the survey results to look at implementing what they can building, building-wise?
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, guys. And next up would be, first reading for school board policies, the policies, the first reading for them are 413, which is harassment and violence, 504, student dress and appearance, 509, enrollment and non-resident students, 513, student standard grade promotion, grade retention, accelerated grade promotion, 514, bullying prohibition policy, 515, protection and privacy of pupil records, 521, student disability and nondiscrimination, 523, policies incorporated by reference, 525, violence prevention application to student and staff, 526, hazing prohibition, and 540, kindergarten early entry. And had any feedback at all at this point?
Mr. Chair and members, at this point, I have not.
Okay. All right. We are going to move forward with, or actually, I thought I saw Karen come in.
Yep, she is.
She's hiding back there. Okay, all right. First up will be the MDHR agreement.
As, Mr. Chair and members, as Karen comes to the front, our school district attorney and our director of teaching and learning, I just wanted to let you know that we've been working on this, and we've talked about this in, at multiple sessions and in my update. And it's been a year-long process and with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, and I think we've come to some agreements to that, and Karen is going to speak to that. And Xena's here if there's any questions on the plan.
Chairman Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for having me here this evening to explain what you're about to consider. The Minnesota Department of Human Rights has been studying the student discipline practices across the state of Minnesota for a little while now. They've been doing a five-year look back at what those practices have been from north to south and east to west, metro, outstate. And of course, Columbia Heights, being a public school, was one of those districts that was, was looked at. And the department has made the determination that it would be helpful for Columbia Heights Public Schools to improve some of the impact on certain communities within the district. And as Superintendent Kelly said, the district has been in conversations with representatives, including the commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, since December of 2017. And I've been And I've been a part of those discussions as well. And those have entailed looking at the, the impact of student suspensions on students with disabilities and students of color. That's been the focus, as I said, statewide with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. And the department has acknowledged, or the district has acknowledged that there is room for growth, and so has entered into this settlement agreement for you to consider. But it's also important to note that the Department of Human Rights readily acknowledged the work that has been done for quite a long time by this school district in particular. In fact, many of the things that were recommended by the department in this process over the last several months, Columbia Heights Public Schools has already been doing on its own initiative. For example, reimagine Minnesota was one of the things that was thought to be a potential part of the solution to this on a statewide basis, and you, of course, have been doing that for some time. Also, to focus on restorative practices, you've been doing that as well. And one of, one of the focuses, or the main focus, actually, of the Minnesota Department of Human Rights is on the subjective categories of discipline, which would include disruptive conduct and subordination, things that are not easy to define. And I think it's important to recognize that those particular categories in your student discipline code are taken directly from the Minnesota Department of Education, which created those categories. And that happens to be true of most districts in the state who have similar categories. So I think that there will be work that will be done with both of those departments, the Department of Human Rights and the Minnesota Department of Education, to change those categories, to hopefully reduce any disparate impact on students of color or students with disabilities. So as a result of all of that, and as I said, that the district has recognized that it would, you know, there's always room to improve, and it would like to improve, the impact of discipline on students of color and students with disabilities, that the school district has agreed to implement new and additional strategies in concert with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights and with the resources the Minnesota Department of Education has offered to provide for all school districts who are involved in this. And this will be done over the next two years. This agreement is effective for two years. There will be biannual reports provided to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights on changes in the impact, changes in the suspension numbers. And so, I guess that is essentially what it is, and I think this evening you'll be asked to consider and approve this agreement.
We'll start with motion and move it forward.
So moved.
Second.
Molly, Laura and Molly, and then open it up to discussion.
We just have a couple of clarifying questions. I think, you know, in, in hearing this and the conversations, it's that this gives us an opportunity to see what we're, what, what we've been doing well, what has been working for us, where are our areas of growth, and then continuing to measure that so that we are doing, reporting and making sure that we are on task with what our goals are in this area. Is that correct?
That's accurate.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for your hard work in that, too, and always wanting to do what's best for our kids and seeking to improve and working with other, in partnership with other people.
Anywhere? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Karen and Xena.
Thank you.
Next up, our long-term facility maintenance for Columbia Heights.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, this evening I'm here to ask for an action item on the 10-year long-term facility maintenance revenue budget as presented at the May 8th school board meeting. This evening, we'll ask you to approve that document for submission to M D E.
Start with the motion and move that forward.
So moved.
Second.
Is that Laura? And then, oops, wrong page, sorry. Laura and, Lori, thank you. Discussion.
I have some questions. And I, I'm going to ask some questions that I know the answer to, because I've already asked them, but I think it's important that we kind of talk about them here, too. One of the questions I had asked, and I wanted to thank for this answer, but the, on this plan, we've got the indoor air quality. And you know that there's been a lot of news about radon testing and those requirements and, or that that's not being done in schools. And then, but we, we are doing that, correct?
Right. We did the radon testing when that was first introduced at the state level. So in 2014, the radon testing was done, and it was reported to the Department of Health and Education, Departments of Health and Department of Education. And we're scheduled in the fall to do the next round of testing. So there are periodic things that you have to do, and, and this fall, that's part of the costs that are covered in here under the health and safety.
Okay, so that's under the health and safety. It's not specifically called out under the indoor air quality, because that's zero.
Right. It's some, the health and, it's, you have to classify it as health and safety management, the 352 code.
Can I ask more questions?
Yeah.
So looking at this, I mean, this is, again, you're predicting, looking at this last year and then predicting forward the, the 10 years, and, and looks like we've got about, other than the 2018 fiscal year, we've got about 1.3 million, up to 1.4 million roughly of, of predicted expenses.
Right. When, when the budget was put together, it's, in 2018, it was put together, the amount that you could levy for long-term facility maintenance was limited. And then on the go-forward, we're trying to just keep it as an even, kind of an even projection for the budget.
So then, these dollars come and, from, from the levy, and they are designated for this purpose, correct?
Right. Part of it's a levy and part of it is actually state aid.
Okay, all right. And so, together combined, that's what, and you have to report on that?
Correct.
And that money can only be used for that?
That's correct. So we levy this, and then it, every year, they just ask for it in April this year. We have to report back to the Department of Education, all the expenses that we did incur, and then they can ask for backup documentation if they don't, you know, if they have some questions or something about it.
And then what happens if we levy those dollars, but we wind up not using them?
If you levy them and you don't use them, then that's why the Department of Education asks for that report. Then the next year, your levy is offset by what you over-levied. So if you said you were going to spend a million and you only spent $900,000, the next year, and you ask for another million, they'd only levy $900,000. So that the M D E watches that and, and does take backs of, of revenue.
So then, part of the award that you received earlier today really takes into account the reporting that we've done on, on these dollars, as well as the other expenditures, that we've spent what we said we were going to spend, and we've been forward and published that information to our, our constituents.
Right, and it's comprehensive, so it covers all the funds of the district, so it covers food service, community ed, general education.
So, so it's not like we can say, okay, we've got in here, under the fiscal year 2019, that we have $50,000 for building and, and equipment, building hardware and equipment. It's not like we're going to say, okay, instead of, instead of doing that, we're going to go and order pizza for lunch one day.
No, we can't do that. It, it can be done where if you find some, if something happens during the school year and there's an emergency or, or priorities change, you can change the focus of how you spend it within certain parameters. If it would be a big change, you would have to talk to the Department of Education first. But it can switch it back and forth a little bit, but it has to be in these categories.
Still in these categories, still related to capital projects.
Correct, and health and safety.
Great, thank you.
Questions? Anybody else?
No.
Okay. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstained? That motion carries.
Thank you. Chairman Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, the next item is for the 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Revenue Resolution. Again, this was presented at the May 8th school board meeting as an informational item, and tonight, we're here asking for action on this item. One additional item that we, I'm not sure if we had it on May 8th, but it is in the board packet, very small print, but it's the allocation for the member districts, who's paying what percentage. So if you look in the board resolution, it was a question about why the board resolution says 105,000 odd dollars, but our, our portion of it is really 7,171.03. And the resolution is put together per M D E requirements, so we can't change that. But this allocation sheet is forwarded to M D E at the same time, so that the levy is done correctly. All of 916's expenditures are in the health and safety area.
So 105 in here is everybody put together?
Correct. Right, it's the whole cooperative.
Or 7,171.03 of this 105.
Is ours, correct.
Start with the motion and move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? Oh, no, you're natty, sorry. And I will read the resolution and open it up for discussion, discussion. Resolution approving Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District number 916's long-term facility maintenance budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 13, state of Minnesota, as follows. The school board of Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District number 916 has approved a long-term facility maintenance budgets for its facilities for the 2019-2020 school year in the amount of 105,895. The various components of this program budget are attached as exhibit A here, too, and are incorporated herein by reference. Said budget is hereby approved. Minnesota Statute, Section 123B, Point 595, Subdivision 3, as amended, provides that if an intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance budget is approved by the school boards of each of the intermediate school districts, member school districts, each member district may include in its proportionate share of the cost of the intermediate school district program in its long-term facility maintenance revenue application. The proportionate share of the cost of the intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance program for each member school district to be included in its application shall be determined by utilizing a blended rate, where half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district long-term facility maintenance times the ratio of the member school district's net tax capacity to the total net tax capacity of the intermediate school district, and half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district long-term facility maintenance times the ratio of the ADM utilization by district to the total ADM utilization. The inclusion of this proportionate share in the district's long-term facility maintenance revenue application for fiscal year 2019 is hereby approved, subject to the approval of commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education. Upon receiving the proportionate share of long-term facility maintenance revenue attributable to the intermediate school district program, the district shall promptly pay to the intermediate school district the applicable aid or levy proceeds. Discussion. That's a lot.
Just a, a couple of, of questions. Now, I see last year that there was a larger health and safety levy, and from the way I understand it, is that was a two-year roll together from the year before and last year?
There were two issues. The first year that long-term facility maintenance revenue was available to the intermediate districts, 916 did not participate. So the second year, they did do two years' worth of levying. And then also, the Capital View facility in Little Canada is being torn down, and so part of that facility had quite a bit of asbestos in it, so there was a larger proportionate levied for asbestos abatement.
And also, I can see that the projections are that, that the levy for health and safety will be pretty significantly less next year, unprojected, projected at least.
Right, and again, that's the abatement for the asbestos. So the first year, they tore down part of the building, and then this summer, they're tearing down the rest of it. So the, the major bulk of the asbestos is coming out now.
Okay, thanks.
Can you just speak just really briefly, if you can give an abbreviated version? I know John read it, it's in the resolution of how the percentages are assigned for those of us that don't have masters in school finance.
Yeah, it's basically, they're taking 50% based on your utilization. So they take Columbia Heights, and they say, you know, how much utilization does Columbia Heights has versus all the member districts? It's that percent. Half of it's attributable to that, and then half of it's based on your tax capacity of your district. So they look at 916, they take all the member district's tax capacity, and then they take the percentage of what's the Columbia Heights tax capacity versus all the member districts, and it's 50% of that.
So if there's, if there's member districts that do have a higher tax capacity than, than we have, so there's higher home values and whatnot, then they're paying a higher share of, of that portion?
Correct. And that's why, you know, South Washington County's at $17,000 versus our 7,000, yeah.
Yeah, the ranges, and it, because it's hard to see on there, but the, the range is from a 1.4% to a 16.1%, and we're at 6.72, so a little short of halfway. Okay, thank you.
And just for people who are watching at home, 916 does, can you just describe briefly?
Sure.
Because we, we throw around 916, 916, but if people just tune in and they're new to the school board biz.
916 is a joint powers intermediate school district. There are three, four of them now in the metro area, and they service mostly Level 4 Special Education students, and then they also service career and technical education. And we send a lot of Level 4 Special Education students over, and this is cost for them running their buildings.
Great.
Thank you.
So you didn't feel that resolution clarified that question quite as well as her, huh?
I didn't, I didn't much about her.
I actually started to kind of chuckle while you were reading the equation, thinking, huh?
Yeah, it was, it was a lot. Okay, anyway, any other discussion or conversation about that? Question? All right, this is a resolution, so Don, be a roll call.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin? Aye.
Seaberson?
Aye.
Uler?
Aye.
Thank you. You still up?
I am.
Next up was our food service contract.
Hey, Chairman Larkin, school board members, Superintendent Kelly, again, last board meeting at May 8th, we had an informational item about the food service management contract renewal with Sedexo America. We've been utilizing them since the 2015-16 school year, and the Department of Education has allowed for a renewal of the food service management contract for one more year. So we're recommending renewal of that contract. The percent increase was a 1.9% increase, and the contract will be required to be put out for bid for the next school year. So next spring, winter, we'll be putting it out to bid.
Motion, move that forward.
So moved.
Second.
Laura, and then, any discussion, questions, conversation?
And it, just a, a comment, and this is, I mean, the renewal of the contract, and then we're continuing to work with our food service program for offerings and food and all of that. This is just setting our rates and whatnot.
Correct. At the informational meeting, we talked a little bit about the goals that we have for Sedexo in the next year, and the continuation of healthy foods, farm-to-school type offerings, and then also to begin to do some scratch cooking in the kitchens again, so.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing nothing else, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up would be the resolution relating to the issuance of school bond, building bonds, and calling an election thereon.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, this evening, we have before your resolution relating to the issuance of school building bonds and calling election. I think we'd like to start by giving a presentation of what it all entails before we get to the resolution. So, again, creating worlds of opportunity for every learner and looking at our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. As we looked at through this process, no different than before, we have principles that kind of guide us through our facility planning, talking about... that kind of guide us through our facility planning, talking about educational adequacy in the space, identifying needs in those spaces, talking about 21st century learning, talking about special education needs, talking about safe and secure environments, talking about our investment, and the taxpayers' investment in our facilities, having long-term plans in those facilities, and making sure that there's a review of maintenance and repairs and renovations. And again, going back to the first part of those educational needs in those facilities, looking at the historical perspective of the buildings, the age of the buildings, what's been done over time, making sure that we're keeping track of all the data, representing that data in a factual way, talking about technology and how technology has changed, making sure that our buildings can support the learning for today. And of course, again emphasizing that safety and security, and making sure that our buildings are safe and secure for our students, our families, and our staff. So again, looking at the historical of North Park Elementary, and recapping past projects. Building was built in 1966, roofing project in 89, 98, for basically repairing some parts of the roof, remodeling and additions in 1998, and then there was some light remodeling for changing classroom space in 2012 through 2014. So what we're looking at today in the bond question for North Park Elementary, necessary improvement needs, again focusing on building security, providing a single point of entry for all visitors, currently a challenge in the existing building, moving administrative offices to the entry to enhance security and customer service. Again, administrative offices in that building are separated, and I mean, you don't have to look back in the past two weeks or three weeks, in the past couple of school shootings to understand the importance of making sure that we're providing as safe and secure a school as possible. Again, those learning space needs, this plan creates an early learning incubator in the same level of what our other buildings have, making sure we're providing adequate space for our early learners, pre-K and kindergarten, library. And in that library space, making it a library space that fits with the learning of today, talking about flexible learning and make your space. Separate science and art classrooms, which we currently don't have in that building to the same level as our other two elementary buildings, media arts lab, and then that cafeteria, cafetorium kind of conversation where the cafeteria and the gym are kind of really merged together along with the stage, and then separating that in the concerns with long lunches and the longest lunch of our three elementaries, and then the safety concerns about that stage that leads off a shelf into the gym area. Grounds and maintenance, again, if you know that facility, I'll show some images in a minute. The play area is the parking area for the buses and the concerns with that. The parent drop-off area is insufficient, high level of concern for safety in that area. So really separating that play area from parking, because we did have to expand parking into that play area because there wasn't sufficient parking at the building. So really a redesign of the traffic patterns in that facility to make sure that, again, we're providing a safe area. So here's a little image. So on the top there, you can see our early learning, so it's in its addition, adding off to the building there to create the space for that early learning. This is the ground level. You can see the new cafeteria. You can see the main entry down right next to the cafeteria, administrative offices moving next to that main entry, existing gym staying where it is, existing stage staying where it is, and then creating a new music band space to support the band and music program at that building. And on the upper level, looking at the early, or the learning studios, so again, just building up on that additional space created by the early learning down below, really creating an appropriate environment for that special education in the heart of the building. Right now, there's challenges moving on the multi-levels and making a space for the special education with the proper facilities where they don't have to travel to get to them is important. There's a separate art and science space we talk about that the other buildings have, and making sure they're supplied appropriately and have the right, the same resources in that media arts program as well. And then you can see the library in the center as well. So that's North Park, and a recap of the things that are going to be done and the needs at North Park Elementary, and we'll move to the high school. So at the high school, starting off with the performing arts space upgrades needed in the Performing Arts Center itself, talking about lighting, you know, our lighting was implemented in the remodel that happened back in 1998. So looking at new LED lighting, making sure all of our lighting works. And the sound system, our current sound system is mostly not our sound system, it's a borrowed sound system from one of our employees, and we make it work, but it's necessary to implement a proper sound system into the facility that the district does own, as outside organizations and/or our programs use that facility. It does not currently have a presentation system, we bring a portable system in, and just your standard upgrades to the seating and carpet and paint that are needed in a room that's been used for a long period of time, so 20 years. So, and then that improved performance space additional to that stage area. Again, looking at more opportunities for our programs and more opportunities for the community programs that use our Performing Arts Center currently. Right now, for example, if we're doing a play performance and that stage set up for that play performance, we can't have any other programs happen until that play is completed. With the additional of the stage space in that gymnasium, we'd be able to have other performances happening at a time. So we'd be able to expand our own programming, as well as expand opportunity for the community things that happen that use our facilities. And then the band room. So separating the band room, creating a new, separate band room space, one that has appropriate separate practice spaces, instrument repair and cleaning room, sufficient instrument storage, new furnishings, of course, additional natural lighting and improved acoustics. And one of the conversations we had last time about our existing band room is the, just really the insufficient space as a whole, very low ceilings, not proper acoustics, there's pipes in the back that are a hazard that hang down, which we actually did have a student hit his head on and have a concussion from in the past. So it's just overall needs in that space, and this new facility provides that. Our band program has been growing. Many of you remember Save the Music Foundation, I've had this conversation before, and back in 2009, approximately right around there, give or take one year, is when we started receiving those Save the Music Foundation grants that redeveloped our fifth grade band program, and our band has been growing over time, and we really need a space to support it and grow that programming. So this would be an addition onto the back of the high school. You can see the tennis courts to your left, so it's just an addition onto the back of the high school. So I think now, I'll turn it over to Director Carr, and she'll talk about the finances.
Thank you, Brian. The Crofts Anderson Construction is the management company that we've used in the past, and they've, we've asked them to update the budget for this project as it would stand this fall if we went out for bond. And currently, they're saying that there is approximately a 6% inflation factor from last year to this year, just because of construction costs increasing because of the market. And so the North Park Elementary is at a $12.4 million price tag. The performing arts space improvements is at $1.7 million, and then the high school band portion would be $2.7, almost $2.8 million. So a total package just slightly over $17 million. $17,013,311 is what they put together for a budget. It's also important to note that there are maintenance items that would happen at North Park Elementary that aren't included in the bond referendum. So in red in particular, these are also updated for current construction costs. The priority number ones are what we would propose to also do during the next couple years while we're doing, while construction would be done at North Park, and it would be items that are already on the list of things to do at North Park in the capital projects levy, and also on the long-term facility maintenance budget. So we would reprioritize those budgets and move those forward so that these things could be done at the same time, which would save costs overall by doing it at the same time. It would be more economical. So basically, it would be exterior envelope improvements for windows and caulking, an area C of roofing, an area of the building that needs to be re-roofed, heating and ventilation improvements in areas that aren't scheduled to be remodeled, heat pump replacements in the HVAC system, and then also some steam piping replacement. And those total to approximately $1.8 million. This slide is a slide showing at $17 million. Currently, Springstead Financial, they're a financial consultants, they're projecting the interest rate for true interest cost at 3.4487%, and that's the market value home, the annual impact and the monthly impact. And you'll note those numbers seem fairly familiar because they're really similar to what we showed last year at this time, and we spoke with Springstead about that. And basically, in May 2017, when the estimates were calculated, the interest rate, the true interest rate at that time was 3.357%, and it was a $16 million bond issuance. But in that year, there's been a $1.3 million increase in the tax capacity in the Columbia Heights School District, or an 8.3% increase in our tax capacity. So I think if you'll remember in January, when we talked about, I think it was January, December, we talked about that, and Springstead came out and gave a presentation, there was a market increase in the market value of homes in the school district, and this is a direct impact of that. So really, the numbers for 125,000, 150,000, and the $200,000 home are virtually identical as what they were a year ago. So the next slides are just talking about the ballot questions for the school district, and it is splitting the ballot questions into three different questions per conversations at previous meeting. The question one would be dealing with the North Park Elementary improvements. I won't read this all, you can read it, and John will be reading it shortly, but that's basically for the North Park school improvements. The second question would be for the high school performing arts space improvements. Again, the total $1.7 million is in the question. And then question three would be for the high school band addition at the $2.7 million, which is also in the question. These questions have been created and reviewed by Council Tom Deans from Knuts and Flynn and Deans. Questions?
Okay, I think what we'll do is what we normally do with a resolution, motion second, I'll read it, and then we'll open it up for discussion if everybody's okay with that. So we'll start with a motion to move that forward.
No move.
Laura?
Second.
Holly? Okay, so I'll read the resolution. Get comfortable. Couple pages here, or better. Resolution relating to the issuance of school building bonds and calling an election thereon. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 13, state of Minnesota, as follows. The Board hereby finds and determines that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to borrow money in an aggregate amount not to exceed $12,476,758, and not to exceed any limitation upon the incurring of indebtedness which shall be applicable on the date or dates of the issuance of any bonds for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and security and safety improvements to North Park Elementary School Facility. The construction and equipping of addition to the school facility to provide the new early childhood and kindergarten classroom space, expanded cafeteria space, the reconfiguration of space in that school facility to provide space for an adequate library, the construction of improvements to the playground, parking lot, and bus and parent drop-off and pickup areas, and traffic floor improvements at that school site. The question on borrowing of funds for these purposes shall be District Question Number One on the School District ballot at the special election held to authorize said borrowing. B, the Board hereby finds and determines that it is necessary and expedient for a school district to borrow money in an aggregate amount not to exceed $1,751,538, and not to exceed any limitation upon the incurring of indebtedness which shall be applicable on the date or dates of the issuance of any bonds for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the renovation, remodeling, upgrading, equipping, and construction of improvements to the high school performing arts space for school programs and for the community arts and civic events. The question on the borrowing of school programs and for community arts and civic events, I'm sorry, the question on borrowing of the funds for these purposes shall be School District Question Two on the School District ballot at the special election held to authorize said borrowing. C, the Board hereby finds and determines that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to borrow money in an aggregate amount not to exceed $2,785,015, and not to exceed any limitation upon the incurring of indebtedness which shall be applicable on the date of or dates of the issuance of any bonds for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of an addition to the Columbia Heights High School Facility to add support spaces for the use by the band and instrumental programs. The question on borrowing of funds for these purposes shall be School District Question Three on the School District ballot at the special election held to authorize said borrowing. The actions of the administration and consulting with the Minnesota Department of Education causing a proposal to be prepared for submission on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of Education for the Commissioners' Review, Comment, and taking such other actions as necessary to comply with the provisions of Minnesota Statutes, Section 123B, Point 71, as amended, are hereby ratified and approved in all respects. The actual holding of the special election on School District Question One, Question Two, or Question Three specified above shall be contingent upon the receipt of a positive review and comment from the Commission of Education on the projects included in the ballots. Excuse me. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause the Commissioners' Review and Comment to be published in the legal newspaper of the school district at least 20 days, 20, but not more than 60 days prior to the date of the special election, as specified in Paragraph Three of this resolution. The School Board must hold a public hearing to discuss the Commissioners' Review and Comment before the referendum for bonds. The ballot questions shall be submitted to the qualified voters for the school district at the special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, November 6, 2018. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A, Point 11, the precincts and polling places for the special election are those polling places and precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district and which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The voting hours at those polling places shall be the same as those for the state general election. The clerk hereby authorized, is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said special election to be given to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part, and to the Commission of Education at least 74 days prior to the date of said election. The notice shall specify the date of said special election and the title and language for each ballot question to be voted on at said special election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days before the date of said special election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said special election to cause two sample ballots to be posted in each polling place on the day of election, the election day. The sample ballots shall not be printed on the same colored paper as the official ballot. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of said election. The notice of the election so posted and published shall state each question to be submitted to the voters as set forth in the form of ballot below, and shall include information concerning each established precinct and polling. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use of optical scan voting, of the optical scan voting system to be posted in each polling place on election day. The clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials as may be necessary for the proper conduct of the special election and generally to cooperate with the state, city, township, and county election authorities conducting the state general and other elections on that date. The clerk and members of the administration- The clerk and members of the administration are authorized and directed to take such actions as necessary, as may be necessary to coordinate this election with those other elections, including entering to an agreements or understandings with appropriate municipal or county officials regarding preparation and distribution of ballots, election administration, and cost sharing. The clerk is further authorized and directed to cooperate with the proper election officials to cause ballots to be prepared for use at said election is in substantially the following form, with such changes in form, color, and instructions as may be necessary to accommodate an optical scan voting system. And the questions are as follows. Instructions to voters to vote completely fill in the oval next to your choice. School District Question One, North Park Elementary School Improvements. Shall the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 Columbia Heights Public Schools be authorized to issue its general obligation school building bonds in the amount not to exceed $12,476,758 to provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of the school sites and facilities, including the construction of security and safety improvements to North Park Elementary School Facility, the construction and equipping of an addition to the school facility to provide new early childhood and kindergarten classroom space and expanded cafeteria space, the reconfiguration of the space in that school facility to provide space for an adequate library, and the construction of improvements to the playground, parking lot, and bus and parent drop-off and pickup areas, and traffic floor improvements at that school site. By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. School District Question Two, High School Performing Arts Space Improvements. Shall the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 Columbia Heights Public Schools be authorized to issue its general obligation school building bonds in the amount not to exceed $1,751,538 to provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the renovation, remodeling, upgrading, equipping, and construction of improvements to the high school performing arts space for the school programs for the community arts and civic events? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. School District Question Three, High School Bandroom Addition. Shall the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 Columbia Heights Public Schools be authorized to issue its general obligation school building bonds in the amount not to exceed $2,785,015 to provide funding for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of an addition to the Columbia Heights High School Facility to add support space for the use by band and instrumental programs? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. Optical scan ballots must be printed in black ink on white material except that marks be read, to be read by the automatic tabulating equipment, may be printed in another color ink. The name of the precinct and machine readable identification must be printed on each ballot. Voting instructions must be printed at the top of the ballot on each side that includes ballot information. The instructions must be included, must include an illustration of the proper mark to be used to indicate a vote. Lines for initials of at least two election judges must be printed on one side of the ballot so that the judges' initials are visible when the ballots are enclosed in a secrecy sleeve. The individuals designated as judges for the state general election shall act as election judges for the special election at the various polling places and shall conduct said election in the manner described by law. The election judges shall act as clerk of election, count the ballots cast, and submit the results to the School Board for canvas in the manner provided for other school district elections. The Board shall canvass the election between the third and tenth day following the special election. The School District Clerk shall make all campaign financial reports required to be filed with the school district under Minnesota Statute Section 211A.02 available on the school district's website. The clerk must post the reports on the school district's website as soon as possible, no later than thirty days after the date of the receipt of the report. The school district must make a report available on the school district's website for four years from the date of the report was posted to the website. The clerk must also provide the Campaign Finance and Public Disclosure Board with a link to the section of the website where reports are made available. Okay, sorry, that's long. But that's the resolution with the three questions. Open it up to questions, comments, conversations.
I have a few things. First, I just want to speak on the, there's a lot of language in there about special election, but this is going to be held in conjunction with the general election. So that language is in there because it has to be, not because we're doing it separately.
I think it's a special because we're adding it to the general election.
Okay, but not as we've done in the past with special elections on a different day. I just want to make sure people understand that it's not going to be held on a different day. And the other thing is just, first of all, I appreciate admin hanging in there with us through our back and forth, and what are we going to do about this? I want the community to know that we've had a lot of robust conversations. I can speak for myself and from what I've heard you guys say that this is a direct reflection of what we've heard from the community. We understand that not everybody is saying the same things, but we really feel that we're making the best decision to move this forward with the information we've got.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that. I think acknowledging the person who was here today that spoke against the referendum and the, quite honestly, numerous people that have come to previous meetings who asked us to move this forward. And I know I've had several conversations, many conversations with community members regarding this. And I think you probably all have, and I'm not going to speak for you, on what, on what do we do after, after the failed referendum last year? And do we go out again? That has brought us here to where we are. I know that, you know, some of the things we talked about concerned overall, and we talked about this, is our community's tax capacity for $17 million. And that's, that's a big number. But we've got, we've got lots to do. And I think splitting this into three questions allows folks to, to help us to pick where, where the money goes. And, and I think we've looked at this, and do we, you know, are there things that we can take off or things that, you know, don't need to be there? And I think that I want to reiterate that everything that was on there the first time is, it's a need. We've got, we've got aging buildings that need work. We have things that, that we have to do. There's been a lot of conversation, and, and I, you know, there's a lot of goals that we have to achieve. We, we want and need to retain good teachers. We want and need to retain and attract students that live in our communities to go to our schools. We want to be able to have programs that provide us an opportunity to educate the whole child. And, and we need the appropriate facilities to do that. We need safe schools. We need schools that, that, that have the, the classroom space to be able to accommodate our students. We need the schools to have our classroom space to accommodate our band students. We have a performing arts center that hasn't been updated in twenty years that has, you know, we've got a great theater program, and they're using light boards and sound boards that are on loan from an employee. At any point, that, that might not happen. And, and I think that it's really time that we, we take a real serious look. We, we talked about before, at our last meeting, when we talked about funding issues and position issues with our declining enrollment at North Park. And I, I look at adding the early childhood incubator onto that space, which brings our early learners into our facilities, help them be a part of our community, and stay within our schools. We, we, I, I don't know, Superintendent Kelly, perhaps you can talk to a little bit about our enrollment at our other schools with our, our early childhood programs? I mean, are we, where are we at in terms of enrollment and capacity of those pre-K4 spaces that we have now?
We put the first one on in Highland Elementary, and that increased our capacity in our kindergartens and with our four-year-old programs. And so, and if you look at both Valley View and Highland Elementary, they have the capacity for four full kindergartens and two four-year-old programs. And we have, and in doing that, we've also been able to, with the four-year-old programs, being able to offer half-day and full-day programs, and we have bathrooms that accommodate the little ones. And at North Park, we do not have that capacity because we have neither the space nor the facilities for the little ones. And so, when we're looking at that, even though we'd like to put programming in that building, we cannot from little on because there is no space. And while we're saying that, whether they're early childhood special education or older, we lack adequate toileting facilities for the special education children as well.
And our, is our current enrollment in those four-year-old classrooms, I mean, we're, we're full, correct?
Yes. And we are happy to be full. We wish we could expand. We don't have the space to do that.
So this gives us the opportunity to expand those programs, and we have people who, who want to be involved in those programs.
Yes.
And, and also by, we've had, previously, we house some of those programs here in this building, correct?
That's correct.
And so, we've been able to open up that space to increase some other programs for even our younger learners, and specifically, students who need extra time to be kindergarten-ready, and that, we have the ability to do that.
Yes, and in addition to that, we also have more space for our special education students who might need large or small motor opportunities. And we are going to next year have a collaboration that the state is working with us on to even expand a little bit more space over here for those special education students because our population is growing.
And I just, I want to circle back to, you know, keeping our, keeping our teachers, keeping good teachers, giving them adequate spaces to teach in, buildings that, you know, aren't, aren't falling apart, for lack of, lack of better terms, having a space that they're proud to teach in, and, and can, and provide a proper learning environment for, for the students. I think any teacher wants to come to work and feels like the space that they have to work in is a space that's going to work for them and be appropriate for the learning that needs to take place. That's, you know, there's lots of things that we need to continue to look at to make sure we're retaining good teachers, but making sure we have appropriate building space for the educational learning is, I think, is paramount to, to keeping good folks in the family.
Mr. Chair, member Mo Miller, the other thing I wanted to mention is that both Highland and Valley View have the additional art and science space that the Board has asked for for at least nine years, that we have designated space, and North Park still does not have that space. And so, that does not put them at parity either in the, in, in the collection of our school family.
And as this move forward, moves forward, if it does move forward, I'm really hopeful that the community is going to take up the opportunities to go and see the space and really look at it within the parameters of school safety, looking at it within the parameters of what special education students should be in, and the spaces that they should be in, and what's appropriate for them, and what we could do moving forward. I know last time it was open, it, it wasn't followed up on by, by as many as we'd hoped. And so, I'm really hopeful that those opportunities, of course, we will provide again, and that people take that time to go and look.
I was walking into the district center here last week, and there happened to be a parent and a boy, a little boy. I couldn't say how old he was, I don't know, nine or 10. And he was looking at the entry, and he goes, "Is this what we should have at North Park?" He asked his mom. And I'm just observing this conversation. I mean, you know, he doesn't know who I am, but I'm a board member. And she said, "Yeah," and he was talking. He began rhetoric about school shootings and state safety, and I thought, "Well, yeah, that's crazy." But we live in this place where that's something that is like in his language, and that he understood that his school didn't have the kind of secure entry that the other schools have. And he was talking to, he brought it up with his mom. His mom did not initiate it. And I thought, "Oh, wow, that's really telling about," it's very anecdotal, of course, it's one story I heard, but I think it's, tells something about the situation at North Park and how some of those metrics of building safety. I can understand, as a former North Park parent, why that might be lower for both kids and parents now, given the landscape of violence in schools and things that are happening. So I've heard, most of the negative feedback I've heard of this, which is actually quite, quite a bit the minority about this bond, and at least who's talking to me about it, is that it's frivolous. I would love for the, the people who call this number frivolous to talk to a student like that and ask him how he feels about the situation. Just encouragement to community members to think about the actual kids walking into the buildings, so.
Well, that's just, it's not just a locked door. You know, the door's locked. I mean, I don't, I don't want to give a perception that the door isn't locked in that building. The door is locked.
Yep.
It's just, once it's opened, you, you can get about. And I, you know, just more and more, it continues to, to weigh on my shoulders of us as a board and our obligation to provide the best environment for learning, and that's an environment where students feel safe. It's also an environment, again, and it's not, the, the North Park piece is a safety piece, but it's more than that. You know, because it's, it's a cafeteria, and it's the early child preschool rooms. But along with that, it, it comes with the, can students adequately learn? Can students adequately learn if they're coming in and having lunch at a time when some people are still having breakfast? Because it takes so long, or they're hungry because their lunchtime is hours later than what somebody else may have. Can they appropriately learn? Can they, you know, appropriately run and play outside? Can they get dropped off to school safely? Is there a bus in their playground? I mean, these are things that, that we have to consider when we look at the overall educational environment of our students at North Park.
Yes, I, I would like to pretty much, you know, echo what everybody has said. The, the concerns and the needs of that building have been something that this board has looked at as long as I've been on the board, and that's been eight years, and I know it started prior to me being on this board. The, the challenges with that building site have been obstacles that the teams have really worked to try to bring down into a manageable level financially. The original estimates were quite a bit larger than this total package, and we were just talking about a specific site at the time. The, the improvements that we're going to be able to, just simply not building a gymnasium, just moving the cafeteria, saved a lot of money. And we kept looking at, how can we make this work? Because that building is aged. It does not have equitable space like the other buildings do. In addition to that, the main safety issue that concerns me is one every day is that we have a single entrance in and out of the parking lot. It is a single lane. Cars, buses, and kids all share that lane. It goes across the playground. There is a steep hill where there's a little horseshoe up there. I was a North Park parent many, many years ago, many years ago. And I remember the, the drop-off for parents on that hill during the winter is absolutely horrendous. It's just not safe. Being able to move that, that driveway down to the, to the bottom and create that separate area, segregate the traffic like we've tried to do at the other locations is, is, is in the best interest of the students. And being able to poll that administration where that building can be monitored is, this is not, this is what needs to be done to make sure that that school stays safe. It creates an adequate learning environment for our students. The, the work that we've done over at 916 and how much data is available with the environmental impacts of how the space is constructed and how it impacts student learning is really important. And this, this needs to be done if we want to be able to continue using that space. I, I...
So let's look at the, at the dollars, and I'd like to ask Director Carr if I can. I mean, this is, there's work that has to be done here regardless. So if, if, if we don't go out for the referendum, there's still work that, that has to be done. Where do those dollars come from?
So this slide where we talked about the, the maintenance items not included in the bond referendum that will come partially from the Capitol Projects Levy and partially from long-term facility maintenance revenue.
So if we, if we look at these areas, and we know that we've got to do windows and caulking, and we have to do roofing, and we have to do heating and ventilation improvements, and, and heat pumps and steam pipes, and, and all of these things, I mean, these are things that are very common, that have to be done at a building that's the age of our building. And these are standard projects, standard capital projects that would be done at, at any point. But then there's other work that has to be done too. So let's say, okay, we're not going to go out for the referendum, but we still want to provide... but we still want to provide an entrance that is like at the other schools, where there is, you know, somebody at the window at the front door who is making sure that folks that are, you know, they're supposed to be there. If we wanted to do that, do we have the money in capital projects to do some of these other things?
In the capital projects levy? No. The capital projects levy was for 10 years, from 2014, I believe, is when it started, and 60% of it is allocated to capital projects, 40% of it is for technology, and those are projects district-wide. So you would have to use almost all of it in one school to get that kind of a project done.
I'd like to talk about the second question. I know we've talked a little bit about North Park, but in our work session last week, I asked the question about the auditorium. Now, I think if you've been in there, you can see that it's aging, it looks aging, but also just the kind of nature of, as we're talking about drawing in students from our community, the presentation system and audio are subpar. Is that fair?
Fair.
Yeah, okay, subpar, I would say. It doesn't say a lot about what's actually happening in our classrooms as children engage with technology, they do one-on-one devices. It's not reflected in some of those things. As parents are coming in, they're not able to necessarily see what's happening because this is their first glance at the school itself. It's not a good setup for encouraging enrollment and maintaining students in our community. But also, I asked the question to the fellow from the engineering company. Is that, who was with us who answered our questions? Is he from the construction company? Cross Anderson?
Cross Anderson.
And I asked him how much it would take, just I said to ballpark it, so, you know, this is total ballpark. How much would it take to throw an auditorium onto Columbia Academy? Because a lot of middle schools have auditoriums, Columbia Academy does not. How much would that cost? And he said about $8 million. And I said, "Okay, so we're talking about $1.7 to essentially get two very functional performance spaces." That's quite, I think, that says something about us going out and actually looking for savings, to not have to just toss a new auditorium on another place to get a second performance site for a school that is growing in its arts and theater programs. It says something about the non-frivolous nature of it, for roughly $1.7 million, as opposed to eight to get a second theater space. Instead, that second theater space is quite a bit cheaper, the full-down stage in the gym, and then just remodeling the place we do have. So I'd just like to put that out there for the public, too. We have looked into this, I think, is what I would like people to hear. We're not making these decisions flippantly, without thought, or rubber stamping, or anything I've heard or read recently, so.
Well, I think it's good to bring up, too, I mean, we did talk about the additional performance space in the gym. And, you know, as we look at, knowing that there is the cost increase from one year to the next, you know, are there ways that we can, you know, realize some savings? And, you know, with that space, as Natty said, I mean, adding in a second space, and as Director Hennigan said, you know, if we have the theater that has their two-week run of their musical, there's nothing else that can be done in that space because their set is there, everything's going on. So there's not other concerts or programs, or even, you know, civic opportunities for citizens in that space. And can you remind me what the cost was for the full-down stage space?
$165,000 was the updated cost.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a, you know, so, I mean, to add that space, I mean, I think it's very cost-effective for what you get. And, you know, we've seen other schools in our communities that have done that, and it has really been a great space. And you guys went out and looked at a neighboring school that had that space.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess I want to clarify for those listening that, you know, we're, again, it, Maureen said it well. I think that the questions got split because of what the community was telling us they would like to see, to be able to have those choices. That doesn't mean, as far as I'm concerned, and I think you're hearing from everybody here tonight, is that our belief that these are all needs and they're all important are there. And for the record, you can vote for all three. This doesn't mean you can only vote for one, and that'll be our job and others, to make sure that if this does move forward tonight, that we educate people to know that you can pick all three if you want, or if you feel strongly about another. But I do believe we could go on for a long time talking about the different examples of, you know, why North Park is important, and why the band area is, and the performing arts spaces. And I sat at a band concert last night, and I watched because of scheduling and band room practice space that there had to be two separate bands, at the same level bands, you know, taking their turns to be up there. And there were some pluses to that. The band director talked about, you know, with the way that they're split up, that, you know, the kids don't get to hide behind the other player or whatever. So I mean, they really had to focus on improving, so push themselves. So there's a bonus there, but that's not, doesn't mean that that can't happen within a room with all of these kids together. But when you talk about growing and developing our programs and giving people a reason to want to be here, that's the, sometimes you've got to spend money to make money, and we're not really making money, but if we want to draw some of our students back, we want to keep our kids, keep our staff, whatever it is, we need to provide them the resources to allow to continue to grow. We've made commitments over the course of time, you know, on the music and the art side of things. And to me, this is a continuation of demonstrating that commitment to that. So I do believe we could go on. Anybody that wants to say anymore, I'm certainly comfortable with you taking the time to share that with people, but my belief, my thoughts have not changed from the beginning that these are all needs.
I just want to make one final comment, and I think, you know, as a board, we have an obligation to hear from the administration what the concerns are, and to work through those concerns and the challenges that we have. We have an obligation to effectively manage tax dollars. That's what we're charged with doing. That's our job. And we have an obligation to report to our community, to report to the voters, the taxpayers, our constituents, that we've got schools that have needs, and that these needs are impacting student learning, teacher satisfaction, you know, across the board. And our job then continues to say, "Okay, we've identified this need, here's how much it's going to cost, and we're bringing it to the voters." That's our job, and we have to do our job. That's what we've been elected to do. Now, what we heard and took the feedback from the, you know, the first time that this went out, I think we heard a lot of great information about having it on and off election year, having, you know, not having the questions split, either one, two, you know, two or three ways. Now we're coming back with that feedback that we've heard from those constituents. We're putting it out there based on that feedback, and again, that's our job to do that.
Okay, remember I said I want to encourage anybody to say anymore that they wanted to. I just decided I want. I think Molly mentioned, no, it's worth reiterating in my mind is, come to the opportunities that are made available to see what is what, rather than sitting out there and best guessing and making comments when we've, I've always believed that if you've taken the time to educate and learn and find out what's really going on, and then if you're not for something, or you are for something, you're making an educated vote. But the opportunities will be presented for people to come out and see what's going on. Please take advantage of those. It's hard when you hear and you see things and comments are being made when people aren't coming here. So, I mean, I applaud, you know, and acknowledge the person that came and spoke tonight and talked about, you know, her opposition to the referendum, you know. That's someone that I see at a lot of different meetings. That's somebody that they're making decisions based on taking time to inform themselves. Whether I agree with that person or not is irrelevant, but that's an example of, you know, people taking the time to figure out, really understand what's going on. So please, if this moves forward tonight, take the opportunities to ask the questions and get educated of both sides, of what it ends up sometimes being is sides in an issue, so.
And if you have questions or concerns, you know, all of our email addresses are on the websites. All of our phone numbers are available, you know, reach out to us. We really do want to hear, you know, the continued question-concerned feedback so that we can provide information or take that feedback as we move forward.
This is a resolution, so if there's no further discussion or comments, Dawn, I would ask you to read the role, please.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up would be the, our National School Board Association membership is up for renewal. And if I understand correctly, there has been no...
No change.
No change in cost. The National School Board Association is a membership that we've had for quite a while. It allows us some discounts, it allows us an opportunity to go to the national conferences. The, here it is, the fee is, the membership is $4,165. So I would start with, I guess, a motion in a second, then we can sure talk about it.
I'm off.
Second.
Molly, and then Natty? Conversation, discussion, or questions?
Just a, and this is in our budget, so it's a budgeted expense.
It's a school board.
Budget in the school board.
School board's budget.
It is, that's correct. It is budgeted in our school board. Okay.
And you guys find the conference valuable, those who attended this year?
Very much.
Worth the resources gained, I think, is the question, you know?
Yeah, we just hope you're going to bring back something that's really going to make a difference. Yeah.
The other thing that's important is that they do a lot of advocacy, just like the Minnesota School Boards Association at the state level, they do advocacy at the federal level for schools.
Here are no further conversations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. And the board topics. I have two things, maybe three, actually, but first would be just to report out. We had a school board listening session before our work session at the last week, and just the general overview of information there. At the school board listening session, there were three parents that came to speak. Two parents together discussed the transfer of a special education teacher and how staffing was communicated. The other parent spoke about music program at North Park and gave an invitation to attend a rally for emergency funding. The parents had spoke about the transfer of a special education teacher and previously contacted, had been previously contacted by the interim director of special education. And then our special education director also reached out to these parents. The comments about staffing communication were heard and discussed at management team meetings. The second parent that spoke wanted the board to come to the rally for the emergency funding. She wanted the board to consider if there is money to bring back music full-time at North Park. She also wanted to voice her concerns with how staffing was communicated. She did not need any follow-up. So that's the listening session stuff. Anybody else for board topics?
The academic awards night is tomorrow night?
Yes, it is.
Six o'clock, or seven o'clock?
Seven.
Seven o'clock in the performing arts center?
Yes.
Just if anyone wants to go.
And the Columbia Academy Band Concert is Thursday. I also believe it's six o'clock, not seven o'clock, at the PAC. And if you want to see evidence of our amazing, growing band program, come check out the Columbia Academy Band. They don't fit on the stage.
Yeah, they do a great job with the band program over there at the academy. I'm really impressed with, like I said, I had my oldest child in North Park many, many, many years ago. So I've gone through the, you know, the band program back in, you know, back before it was cut back. He was in the fifth grade band program, and I was so impressed when I went over to the academy and the level of music that they're playing over there is really spectacular. So I definitely, oh, and we have the choir concert coming up, I believe it's next week as well, over at the high school.
High school choir concert on Monday at 7:00 PM. I'm sorry, Tuesday. Monday's a holiday. Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
And before we meet again, it will be graduation, correct? Or is there a meeting? There's not a meeting before then, correct? High school graduation, June 7th, so invite, come out and cheer on the graduates. You sported.
Fifth Monday, first Monday, you are correct. Yes. I'm going to go backwards and speak just to a little bit on a couple of the listening session comments and some of the concerns and the information that was out there regarding staffing and music and art and PE. I want people, I understand people's frustrations about staffing and how it was communicated, but I think people also need to understand that when it comes to staffing, there are some things that are protected until some of the staffing decisions are made final. And as hard as that may be to accept, it's a law, it's a reality, and quite frankly, in my opinion, it's a personal courtesy, a professional courtesy to the staff members that are impacted, however they're impacted. So I understand people's frustrations, but I think that they need to understand that there's some difficult decisions being made, and that the way those are communicated is very specific in how they do that. And also that, moving forward, if there's questions about a program or something that you believe to be you hear that something is gone or eliminated or whatever, I would encourage you to reach out to your administrator or the, you know, building administrator to the district administrators, or one of us, because comments that were made at our last meeting were not accurate. Music is not gone, PE is not gone. Some of these things in the conversations, the delivery method is different. And I know people don't necessarily want to hear it that direction, whatever, but what I was hearing and what I was getting asked about is, is how could you no longer have your hearts in the arts? You've gotten rid of music. It went from a K-2 program that was a delivery method change to people were saying that all music was gone in the district. You know what I mean? And so these things grow and grow. So please ask questions. Please, a caution is to use, make general statements if you're not, again, it's that education piece I was talking about earlier. Understand both sides. So I apologize for any frustrations for anyone that struggled with the communication with staffing, but there's some specific limitations that administration is being held to. So if you have questions about the programs, again, please ask as well. So just wanted to clarify, music is alive and well from kindergarten through senior high, the 12th graders, in all of our schools, so.
Can I just piggyback on that with regards to kind of reactiveness? If you hear something and it kind of causes you to do a double take, or maybe it rubs you the wrong way, I'd really just encourage more question asking. Just take a beat. Think about where you could find some additional information before there's a reactive blurt. I think we can do a great job in this community of demonstrating civil discourse, of hearing each other out and of asking questions. But if we continue to have sort of blirty reactiveness, it can damage our community's reputation so that when things do get worked out and things do rise to the surface and people have heard each other out in both directions, we can show people that we can disagree and not fight, that we can be in it together as a community even when we disagree, and we can have civil conversations and civil discourse with one another even when we disagree, so.
I want to take that a little bit further, too, and, you know, we talked earlier, I talked earlier about our job as a board. And I think one thing that I would like for us to continue to work on as a board is to provide the information or the communication that we can provide about our process so that we have, you know, there, social media is doing a great thing for us, and it can hurt us as well. But if we can be proactive as a board in communicating, you know, here's our timelines, here's our process, here's what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, this is why we didn't talk about it, you know, in open forums previously, we can answer a lot of those questions before they come up. So I want us to continue as a board to continue to work on that communication and be proactive about our, things that we might understand about, you know, when, you know, the time of year when certain things happen, or why they happen, the way they happen, and the process in which they happen. I think we have an obligation as a board, as board members, to communicate some of that to our constituents.
Funding streams, similarly, funding streams are so complicated and confusing, and when you're dealing with large groups of people and employment issues, it's not always, thing happens, and thing A happens and thing B immediately happens. It's just not that simple. And I think as a board member, it's something I've had to learn, and it's, I think you're right, us really sharing those processes and funding streams so that people can have some of the information that we have would be helpful.
Anybody else? I like that. If something doesn't, if it rubs you wrong, doesn't make sense, please ask. Having single-source information is sometimes can be maybe less informative than it maybe it should be, or your ability, it limits your ability to be able to fully educate yourself on whatever the situation is, so. The only other thing I have, just want to make sure that, I know when I read it in the things coming up, that the school violence of the school board closed June 5th, Tuesday. It opened today, which is Tuesday, June, May 22nd. So it opened today, closes the... It opened today, which is Tuesday, June, May 22nd. So open today, closes the 5th of June. And, uh, it was also read in here, but election day is November 6th this year, so. That's what I got for board topics. Anybody else? Okay, if we have nothing else, then we'll adjourn the meeting at 9:14.